John, I see a friendship notification is being sent.
Okay, hold on one second.
Hey Danny, what do you mean by default file?
Sorry, what did you say?
What do you mean by default file?
John said you have a file for the font, the circles font?
Oh, yeah, you just need to set up font family like in Google?
Yeah, I just, I need the circles font so I can have the person helping us with this billboard. Place it.
Just wanna make sure I was on the same page.
Yeah.
You guys waiting on someone? How we get started? Okay, sorry, let's go ahead and get started, Amit. You said the notification is being sent?
Yes.
Okay, but I'm not getting it, or do you see confirmed delivery?
Uh, that is hard to check the non-conform delivery. We are not, Jerry, we are not maintaining logs anywhere for sending notification.
What, what was that?
We are not maintaining logs anywhere, it's like that notification, logs is hard to find.
Shouldn't? You want to send it to yourself?
Sorry Jerry?
You try to send it to yourself?
Uh, no, no, no. For friendship notification, John did not receive it.
Yeah, in fact, I don't think I've seen one in a long time. Can you tell me Jerry if there's been any notifications to anyone saying?
Not I'm following you or following you again one minute.
So, I had a friendship created yesterday, someone on our team, and I see the card in my feed, but I didn't get a notification. And I don't recall the last time I've ever seen one like that. That's disappointing, I'm wondering how many other thousands of people did not get that notification?
What notification, you're talking about with somebody, with the new friend notification?
Yeah, we became friends, so. Yeah, I had followed someone on our team. She followed me back, I had no idea she followed me back.
Uh, she even sent as recently as, oh, they're not, they're not sorted. But I see that we're sending like fifty of them a day on average.
Can we confirm that and then confirm why I didn't get one?
Um, let's see. I'm gonna take your amplitude logs and see what time was the friendship with, who was it with?
It was with Aliana.
Okay.
Yesterday, like, I don't know when yesterday exactly.
I can find it out. I don't think it's an issue, but we'll find out.
I had asked, I think Todd had a friendship recently or Danny, and they didn't have a notification either.
People are getting notifications. People are getting them, so we'll see what else goes on in his friend, equal to one. Sean, let's see. Okay.
I'm, I'm good.
I'm just looking, okay, this was friend was on tenth at five PM UTC, so that'd be around noon. Noon yesterday. Lot of notifications. And this was at thirty-four. Okay, one signal, quit lagging. Um, okay, one signal says they're doing maintenance right now, great. Not one signal, sorry, amplitude, amplitude's doing maintenance.
So, Amit, go ahead and, in the production app, let me go and follow you. Actually, you might be following me, or we're friends, so can you unfollow me and follow me back?
I did just put John also, so he did not receive it.
You think it's just for John? Can you repeat that on it?
I unfollow and followed you, did you receive notification?
No.
JD, I followed you back.
Okay. How, how's it coming along for you with the notification task here? Cause it's kind of a full-time thing. I mean, it's not full-time, like forty hours a week full-time, but it's, it's an important thing to be on top of daily. To, you know, make sure all these notifications are being sent.
Yeah, I mean, I am getting through it, but I do have to keep checking some of the same ones. But it is working as far, so far, even yesterday, I think Ari, we had that person, Kishan, a friend, I can't remember, that's a friend of Ari's or someone he works with. But he friended me, I friended him back, I got the notification.
Well, you, you got different kinds of notifications. There's ones for like Ari thinks you know this person.
Right.
You have, where, there's so many. The one in question, the one around after two, after someone falls back, so.
Right.
We need a system, Jerry, maybe you could help Todd, how, does, like, develop something where there's a check? Like, how would you know that this one isn't being delivered versus the several others that are similar? Cause I mean, at the end of the day, I did not know that Aliana followed me back. And I would never know if I don't open app again. And I probably would never know if I hadn't scrolled on my activity feed to figure it out. So, as far as I know, I'm just completely dark on it versus had I known, maybe I would say, oh hey, good to see you. Like, there'd be some engagement, so it's.
You didn't get a friend connect for her either?
No.
I got followed back by this guy Miguel yesterday, oh, but I invited him in, that's why I got it.
So.
You know, what I, what I do.
Amplitude is not complying with me at the moment. They are going under maintenance, and if I try to scroll back for anything, it is just bugging out on me. Uh, so I would have to like try and move through one signal and see if I can put a PDF export. But from what I see.
You know what, Josh Emmett added me to his circle of trust, I didn't get that one either.
Okay, so, this is, this is definitely.
If you go into your alerts, Todd, on, and just look at that, that helps a lot right there, cause you could see a ton of them. Yeah, that's what I do. Make sure I'm getting them. Then I go through the template list, using the phones that I have and try to recreate the scenarios of the, of the notifications in these templates.
We have confirmed deliveries. Well, I can see in one signal that there are confirmed deliveries as of yesterday for this notification, so it's not like none of them are going out. Uh, but if you're saying that you're not getting any.
Well, I know lots of notifications go out, I get notifications all the time.
No, I did, no, I'm, like, this specific type of notification, I have the log saying from one signal, at least from a high level right here, that the notification, the new friend, and the new bestie, those have confirmed deliveries, multiple confirmed deliveries yesterday. It's not, it's not code blue, it's not flatlined, it's
Yeah.
If it's something, there, there is some edge case here.
Is it possible they're being throttled by people who are in like large group chats?
Hmm, I wouldn't be throttled, no, I doubt, if, especially as long as it was ago, you would have received invite in.
But you didn't, so no one, as of now, in our just little test right now, has received that notification, right? Cause Amit tried with me and you, Jerry. So something's definitely wrong. But you're saying you think other, do you think I got one yesterday? Maybe your logs are wrong.
Uh, well, you're gonna have, yeah, it's gonna be one single in, but I don't have anything for you, John, saying you have it. Like, I don't, I don't have anything saying you did or did not have it, my logs are fried at the moment. They're fried, dashboard, under maintenance. Yeah, I can't really say whether it, you did or did not get it. What we could do, Amit, is we could hook the database up to the production and see what happens if we try to follow, unfollow, shoot, I can try that right now, actually. So, if I go from my app, I will go and we'll turn, we'll connect to the production database, and we'll have an answer very quickly now.
So I'm doing log on local also, so I have.
I'm, I'm doing it as well, so it shouldn't take long. And then we're gonna do, you have a new follower, a new friend, and then here's the template ID. User update connection, cool.
I just got one that someone followed me back and wants to become friends. That was me, I'm on Ted Bones.
Followed you back? Danny followed you, like, you have.
Can we read it, yeah, will you read it word for word?
Yeah, I'm gonna read it word for word, it just came in, so hang on. Megan Swift just followed you, you have a new friend, Megan Swift just followed you back and wants to share some things with you.
Yeah.
That's the one I should have got yesterday.
Yeah, that one.
I was in the app when it came in, that's another thing that does actually make a difference sometimes if you have the app closed or don't have it closed.
Now, let me see, before we before we go too far on this, let's see. And then if I go and I do this. Okay, let's see. Two-player ID, yes, press for any contacts, alert, all alert. Oh, let's see. And notifications, that alert equals a hundred. And then follow-up the triggers. This one exists, then no. Oh, okay, so you won't get duplicates, so we have a, we have a check that you can't get a notification from somebody that already followed you. So that, so. So that's why Amit's or my test did not work.
Does the follow, unfollow?
Yes, so let's check and see, unfollow history, where you're due to this. And, let's see. Follow keeps the, no. Yeah, so I don't see where it would have happened for Aliana in you in that case, Sean, I'm looking, I'm looking at her user. I don't, or she would have unfollowed you. But I would like amplitude to start complying before I can see what happened there. So, in a perfect world, if I went and did this, so let me go do this real quick. If I go here, and then I do friends, and I do and then I do that number, and then I follow you back. And that should trigger a notification.
Yeah, I got that one.
Yep, and that, that's because of the, the follow, unfollow thing, but, yeah.
You disabled it?
What's that?
You disabled that?
No, I, uh, I, what I did is I wiped my unfollow history.
Okay.
Yeah, right, to resimulate a first-time follow.
Right, okay. So, yeah, what is going on, so I guess you wanna wait till amplitude comes back up? Yeah, I wanna know why Danny didn't get the circle of trust one, I haven't seen that one in a long time either. Being added to someone's circle of trust, my number's been going up over the last few days, but I don't recall seeing it.
New bestie, okay, well, hold on, let me let me kick out.
We can wait until amplitude's up, I don't wanna.
We're gonna try something real quick, I'm gonna kick out, I don't know. Sorry, kicked my sister out, let's see what happens. Anything?
I got one, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't change, I didn't do anything, I, I just put you in my SOT.
Okay. Okay, so some are working. Well, let's look into it more when the amplitude's back up. Amit, do you wanna continue with your?
Yes, so today I continue working this tagging photo feature. So that is completely finished and pull request also merged. I want to know the notification, how it's, then Danny has sent you a couple of notifications, so can you please confirm, is it looking good? Did you receive it?
Which ones?
Uh, tagging you in a photo.
Uh, I mean, I got some that John tagged me in a photo.
Yes, I usually, I.
Yeah.
So, when you click on this notification, John, where it should be direct?
Well, let's ask Danny that.
It should take you into the topic where the photo has been dropped, really, I mean, it should take you right to the photo if it can.
Maybe we could ask Amin if that's possible, or Jerry?
Amin, can you give a thought, then I will pass that thought to inside the notification. Let me see my screen, I will show you how it's looking, the text message also.
What were you saying? Amit?
Sorry?
I didn't catch what you're saying.
Uh, we are tagging phone number also, no? So in that time, we are sending SMS when we're tagging phone number.
Yeah.
Currently, like, see here. You can see my screen?
Yeah.
So this is SMS is good, when you tag someone. And title, I'm sending name of the sender, that is correct, or what's the title?
I think that the wording, everything has to be tinkered with a little bit. So, it probably could say you were tagged in a photo? Alright. Danny? Maybe the name on top in bold? Uh, I'm probably just do.
I mean, that one is the one I saw on my phone this morning, and it was the app one, not an SMS, and it got me pretty good, it was like, I mean, I knew it was you though, I was thinking, should it have the last name?
I guess we can try, try different ways and see what converts. I'll leave that up here.
Yeah, let's try, I mean, let's try it a couple ways, I'll, I'll share them with Amit. Amit, will you shoot me a Slack, I don't wanna forget.
Okay, I will sort it too.
Getting hit up by a lot of people right now.
Yeah, so I send the API details also to Amin, all the API details. Uh, Amin, let me know if you have any questions. This is on QA currently.
Okay.
A question for Amin from, from Danny is, um, is it possible for a notification like this to take you as a user to, directly to the photo that you were tagged in? Is that, is that even possible?
Uh, no, I think not, like, in the chat, like, in the list?
Yeah, yeah, or not in a list, maybe in the chat with the photo opened? You know, like, in the view window?
This, yes, we can do that.
But it won't be in the list, like, you'd have to scroll the list to find it?
Yeah, the user has to scroll.
Interesting. What do you think, Danny? I don't know if you caught that?
And what?
I did not, sorry, Zane and Jordan Baldwin both text me right now, uh, say that one more time?
Uh, we can't really take, take the user to the list, the photo in the list, but we could open the photo, so like, you could be in the chat, you just, the user would have to scroll to find the photo.
I like opening the photo.
Yeah, we could do that, they said.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I think the user should see the photo, what they came in for.
Yeah.
The first thing they're gonna wanna do is hit their friend up and be like, why did you tag me in this?
So, Amit, would you have to do some backend work to make that happen?
No, I need rod from Amin, so we what rod he was, so he will give me the rods, I will configure it in the backend.
Okay, well, I'll let you guys work on that when Amin's freed up.
Okay. Oh yeah, so that's it, promised that, so this took my lots of time. And he also added some pull PR comment, so I fixed that too.
Okay, so would you say your part's pretty much?
Yes. Yeah, ninety-nine percent done only, whatever, I mean, we'll suggest the changes, that thing is remaining only.
Okay, that's cool, that, this is gonna definitely be a multiplier effect, if we get this working right, it's gonna get a lot of engagement.
I have one question, sorry, John, yeah, I forget, like, do we, can we tag into one-to-one chat also?
Uh, it's probably a better question for Danny.
I don't know, the person shouldn't get notified, like, the person, if it's a DM and somebody's not in that chat, that'd be weird.
Yeah, well, let's see. Wait, ask the other question, Amit?
I'm listening. Amit?
Uh, so I, I was saying that, can we tag a user into one-to-one chat also?
Can we tag a user into one-to-one chat, yeah, that's a good question, which? Why would, why would someone?
Why, yeah, why would you do that? I don't, I don't think that's a thing.
Yeah, yeah, you'd put a photo in the, yeah, that's not really a thing, cause the, the way it happens is you add the photo, then you tag your friend, but you're not gonna add your photo into a one-on-one chat, if you do.
Maybe if you add a photo to a one-on-one chat, the person's gonna get the notification of the message in the chat. So there's no need for a tagging, you're not tagging people outside of your one-on-one chat, right?
Uh, not, not that, that, the way you phrased that actually confused me a little bit.
But you would, if you're in a one-on-one chat with me, Danny, you wouldn't tag John in a, in a photo, would you?
Um.
It's, it's just me and you in a chat?
Probably not. The thing is, is if we already have a one-on-one chat, we don't need to send an SMS out.
Right.
So, so.
I think we focus on the group chat, since the whole purpose of it is to.
Yep.
Group chat only?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, was that it then, Amit?
Yep, yeah, so that's.
Okay. Okay, Jerry, you wanna give your?
It does need, it does need to, if you get, if you're not a user of the app and you get tagged in the photo, and you receive the SMS, there needs to be a link in the SMS as well. It can't, so we have the, the message that says John tagged you in a photo, we also need the link.
And the link needs to be an invite link. And the person who did the tagging needs to get credit for it. Needs to be the inviter of the person receiving it.
That's something Jerry, you can provide, right?
Uh, it could already be provided if anything. It should be in the code somewheres.
So then Danny ping me what you want, like in the S M S. So I will do that. So I think we have.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll send the link also.
Okay.
Okay, so then Jerry, you want to give your update?
Alrighty, so that encryption thing for the groups, it's it's all done. Um, we have, uh, it's in production. The encryption is off on the discoverable groups. And I have AOD working on the uh I have been working on the admin. Ian said there was something he was gonna pull him to the side to do today, but he can go back to working on that admin unless there's some priority behind it.
Okay, cool. That's what I was just telling Ari. We'd have it ready in about a week or so, but it sounds like maybe soon.
We got the got the encryption done. Um, again, this is only for discoverable groups.
Right.
Um, Danny asked last night about something for the deleting users. And we have a queue in the admin that Chantel's been adding them to. However, I haven't made an automated process to handle that pipeline. Once they've been added and marked for deletion. I know we were gonna try to be a little cautious for this to make sure we don't remove more than what we intend. But if that's something that we're trying to do, um, I can go ahead and start work on that that deletion pipeline.
The reason I asked about that is because we are getting some users from uh other countries that have some strict data policies where they need to be able to request account deletion. And I can see the emails coming in when it happens. It's not super common, but some people like to come in from the wealth post. They request to delete their account. And so I don't want to end up uh in some situation where we drop the ball there.
Well, hey, that comes into another question. Um, what were we gonna do with that support chat? I'm sorry, I don't want to change things too much, but weren't we supposed to on that page, like add in a chat function on that help screen?
Yeah, we were. We could use.
I mean, that's might that might be, but uh for another day. Ian told me I might be, I've got somewhere to be, but yeah. We want.
Was Ian gonna work with you on it?
Well, uh, are we going to add a chat on it? That's that's the question. Uh, we can use we can use the amplitude. I mean, the amplitude, uh, well, hold on, I think.
Intercom, intercom is the best one as far as.
Oh dude, I love.
I see other people using. I think we should use intercom. I know we've used Talk Two in the past because we have uh some experience with it. Ian does. But intercom I know is what like Nikita Beer uses and a lot of the other people who've done this with apps. I feel like we probably should stick with what what everyone uses.
Yeah, I love intercom. If you could like set set us up an account, it's.
Sure.
I'll work on it.
Got it. Will you send me a quick Slack?
Yep, uh, let me do that right now. Got it. And yep, so we're gonna go and let's see, I had some query updates to do on that that permanently closed business, John. Um, that's not in production yet. So that's why you got notifications that you got three of them uh because yeah, you got three of them because there was a typo in the query, but it should be now. Looking at it was looking at the wrong field that was also called profile key. From a different table, I I can I can get really deep into it, but it's just a quick typo. Uh, yeah, my day yesterday was kind of cut short abruptly.
That's why we didn't open it up to like everybody, you know, before we work out little kinks and it's gonna be.
Absolutely.
Perfections.
Yep. I'm just saying my day yesterday was kind of cut short abruptly. I was in the middle of running a script to decrypt all the chat messages and the discoverable groups. And my power went out for two and a half hours, so.
Was there a crazy storm or?
No, no, it was. It was like, it was just barely raining outside. So.
Dude, we had a crazy storm last night. I can't believe it. I ended up having nightmares. There was a tsunami coming. It was so bad.
Well, um, you back on track now, Jerry?
Yeah, we're we're back. I did some database changes for emit for the tagging. Um, there's something that I'm confirming with Ian and Jeff about for um the landing page for the core flow. They want to add a little uh conditional flag that on the redirect page to favor tech to you on circles that the the discount will be conditional depending on some internal things that they're gonna calculate on their side. So I'm gonna show that text whether or not that conditional flag is sent. Yep, and we're gonna get to amplitude. We're gonna see what's going on once that comes up. And let's see what else. Chat admin's in a good spot. I might dig into that up the discover feed and see if there's any speed ups that we can apply. I I know you you don't want to do the the seven day index, so we'll see if there's some some better way that covers more that we can apply.
Yeah, you know, more I'm thinking about too, as we open up internationally. I don't know if this helps or makes it more complicated, but I feel like we should just have totally different feeds for different regions.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it could go by country code.
That's what I was gonna suggest. We could do that.
It could go by the country code, but then but then somebody else from another country comes in the app and it's like empty.
If we. Apparently, not necessarily, um.
I guess entertainment can be like entertainment can be, you know, agnostic to everything.
True. So, but point is, it's possible.
Yeah, well, yeah, if we just define what what it could be. Yeah.
Well, okay, yeah. Um, I think that'd be interesting to have different feeds by region because, you know, obviously, yeah, favoring places here isn't necessarily gonna make sense to someone overseas.
Yeah, I mean, as we really get more people, then we can like filter it more into like area code even like a phone number area code or geography based on their location and stuff like that.
Okay.
But um.
And the country code's the easiest one, right?
Oh, yeah, that'd be the easiest.
Certain, right, certain region, like there's no no guesswork at all.
Right, um, we just want to make sure. It might not be the best thing, because imagine like if you're i- imagine if you're traveling to the U K and you want to see a discover feed in the U K, then it would have it have to be some kind of location that gets requested. So you can see like the U K's discovery feed and not your local discovery feed.
Right, right. Okay, um, well, yeah, let's discuss that more in the coming days.
Yep.
Uh, because we are getting more international downloads, so. Would be definitely worth um pursuing. Okay, what else going on?
Uh, I think once Danny gets that intercom account made, that and the um the delete script should pretty much fill it to take the rest of my day.
Got you, okay. All right, and do you need anything? Any questions for anyone?
Hmm, let me let me check my notes. I I don't think, but one thing I might want to work with Amin later on is the deep link for chat. If you want that deep link to have like topic support, we'll have to tell Amin how the topic key would get passed. So we know when we bring him into a chat to bring him to a certain topic. I know that was brought up last week.
Yeah, what happened with that? Yeah, we didn't pursue that all the way, did we? So currently, the deep link at best takes you into the main chat, but not the topic, right?
Correct. Only from our dynamic link, like push notifications are fine.
Okay, what do we need to finalize that?
I have to add a parameter to the URL and then Amin has to from his end recognize that parameter and then navigate to the topic properly.
Okay, um, so you do you need uh something from from Amin now?
Um, I'll work with him on Slack. It's not nothing we have to do on this call.
Okay. How much? How much effort do you think it would take between the two of you to have that in our next uh next build?
That would be more for Amin to answer.
Um, yeah, once we have the URLs, I'm working on it. Um, we already have the base done there, so I'm just now gonna map this new uh link to what we already have in, so. And it's gonna be in the next bill, so it's not gonna be a lot of work.
It won't be a lot of work, oh.
Yeah, I'm I'm assuming it's not gonna be a lot of work.
Okay, okay, great. Um, okay, yeah, so Jerry, will you? Will you stay on that with Amin?
I just sent him the Slack message. It's pretty much.
Perfect.
I mean, you have any questions about what I just sent you?
Do you have any questions, Amin, about it?
Yeah, I was talking to you. I mean, yeah, um, I see the team around and um.
You got that?
I will, yeah. Just like what we have right now, it's like a topic key. Iran is already mapped, so.
Oh, you want? Okay, I can do a topic key.
Yeah, uh, yeah, once once I'm be working on it, um, yeah, I I can start working on it right now. To see like the topic key will me means let's work for front end to do.
Okay, we can call it topic key.
Mine's okay.
Cool. Okay, great. Yeah, we're gonna definitely want that. I've had times when we wanted it, but while we're at it, I mean, will you give your update?
Oh, yeah. Um, yesterday. Oh, okay, so let me see what's what's been done on my side yesterday. Uh, yeah, I found is uh I finished working on the the pagination of these uh the um the discover groups. Now, like, uh, there was some uh work left to be done there. Uh, yeah, not that. It was like the location, like the issue that Ian that had or or that I don't remember like after his onboarding, there was like no no uh discover groups at the top of the lobby because the location was missing. So I so I fixed that. Um, also, um, the the issue you sent me in the video where they're bringing the people together screen was uh it was like interfered by like the start convo. So you have like two screens overlay and all that. So I fixed it. So the fix is if the user in the middle of like the uh is like if the user in the bring people together screen, the sound convo will not be triggered.
Perfect.
So, yeah, that's yeah, that's fixed too. Um, what else there? Yeah, you the was P R. Let me see. Yeah, I'm also like edit the build and everything. So, yeah, that that was it. And today I started working on the um the new people finder screen.
You did start working on that already?
Yeah, um, I'm I'm like, I'm there, like started just like from to the, I'm gonna redo it. Um, even like the logic there, um to redo to have things that are finished up there. So, yeah.
Okay, let's make sure we um get the right list that we pull, you know, like we have the one from onboarding and then S O T edit S O T.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and there were a couple of little nuances on there. Uh, do you have any questions about it so far?
Uh, no, um, no.
Okay. I think when we do the phone number one, um because like you have choices, you can you can add a friend by phone number.
Mm hmm.
Um, there there was a couple of little things I was gonna discuss with you, like if you type in a phone number and they exist, then we can obviously they can just add from there. If it doesn't exist, we can have like an add contact button perhaps. But um, I want to talk to you a little bit about just how it would function. When you get to it, when you get to that part.
Yeah.
Okay, and um there was something else on that screen too. I think the search, the search bar, um the search bar has the back button in it.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I mean, we've been using it that way. Is that, uh, do you want to keep it in that way or should we go like the traditional way with this like outside?
I mean, like the search input that we have right now, like the the one that has the icon and the center.
Yeah.
One has no back button behavior.
Right.
So I'll have to do it and.
Or should or obviously the easiest place is reuse that component and then just create a back button above?
Yeah, that would that would be the easier one.
Okay, and maybe even better, um. Yeah. Let's, I mean, it is consistent around the app, so let's just do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'll be better. Okay, and then how many we show for the suggestion, like where it says show more above the show more, like I think we have four. But I might want to do like ten. That's pretty easy. Once, once you build it, we can change the number, right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so then perfect. We'll cross that bridge once it's built. Okay, cool. Um, then it sounds like we're in a good spot for a test build, though. Did you? Did you end up doing one yesterday?
Yeah, I did one.
Slack message when you do next time, because I I had a really long day.
Um, yeah, I I don't like the test flight notification.
I don't get a notification.
On test flights?
No. Do you? I never get one, ever.
You mean, your your own like stop notification for test flight app?
No, it wouldn't do that.
Setting you have to enable.
Is that right? So default, it's off?
Yeah, if you go to app information, there's notifications.
How do I get to their settings, app information?
Our test flight. So if you go to test flight and then click on and then scroll to the bottom.
Well, I just went to test flight app and it has all my notifications.
So if you go in the circles on test flight and you go to the bottom, it says notifications are on.
Circles, okay, um. So I'm in settings. Go to the circles app in settings?
Not.
Test flight, like the actual test flight app.
Test flight app itself, okay.
Yeah.
And then go to circles and.
The bottom.
Bottom.
Notifications.
Uh, they're off.
Yeah, one there.
Okay, thank you. Well, I wish I knew that a long time ago. Okay, cool. Well, so that's there's a Q A build then, I mean?
Yes, I have forty one.
Forty one. Is it also Android?
Yep.
Okay, Todd and Chantel, will you guys test with the forty one?
Yeah.
Great. Remind me, remind me again a little bit of what's in there, I mean?
Um, okay, yeah, well, it's in the like the pagination of the discover group at the top of the lobby. Also, um, we we fixed some issues in the search places screen. Like the yeah, for checking, yeah.
Okay, great.
And also the issue of the the bringing people together screen interfering with start convo. And also changes from where else like uh remove, like he says, this P R improves the interaction with the draw in the favorite flow, like when you want to start a group.
Okay.
He did some work there. He can speak more of it. That's that's in this that's in this build.
Okay, great. Um, Jerry, is there any thing particular in Q A that you would want to suggest in this build?
Um, let's see, let me look at what Ahmed pushed lately. There are some P R's emerged, let's see. Uh, this would be the permanently closed businesses. From it, the, the, so there's not the new people finder on this yet, right?
No. Not yet, but the permanently closed should be under the hours?
Um, yeah, if, if you put the business, it should fetch it.
Okay, good, I'll check that out.
Get on that, check on the hours, another thing. I don't, I think this is for Amit, I sent him a message, I don't know if he got to it, but there's a business. Uh, so I mean, I said you, there is a business for, this place is actually permanently closed. It was, I believe it was showing closed incorrectly because business is open overnight. So if a business is open from eleven AM to two AM, I don't, I think. There's something short circuiting because the app, the, the business is open past midnight. So you might wanna make sure that we consider that when considering the business is open or closed.
Wait a minute, yeah, so like if it's just closed during normal operation, it certainly should not return closed, is that what you're saying is happening?
Well, i- it, it seems to be an edge case for places that are open after midnight.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mama, did you catch that? Amit, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you catch that edge, this case is, uh, there's a defect here with the hours for the business, could you explain it to me?
Yeah, so I'll just resend it to you in Slack, so there's this place. They are open after midnight, so they close at two AM Tuesday morning. But our show on Monday, which is technically correct. But it was showing closed for me whenever I was viewing the profile, even though on my screenshot, it's. Three twenty-nine in the afternoon, which should be right.
So, but we are showing to open it was based on the business location, not your location.
Right, no, it's still, okay, so it opens at eleven thirty, um, Pacific time, which would be one thirty my time. And three thirty my time, so it should be open.
So currently it is showing closed for you?
Yes, and I think could be because it closes at two AM. Which would be, it, it's open from eleven thirty Monday to two AM Tuesday morning.
Chicken. So currently this business is open, my, right?
Well, so if you look it up in Google, it's actually, I think, gonna be permanently closed, but it wasn't reflecting permanently closed in the hours. But. Right now, for those hours, it would be closed. Because it wouldn't open for another hour. It opens at eleven thirty Pacific, so it opens at one hour, basically.
So I mean, the, they should be completely divorced from each other, the business is in operation on a daily basis. Is totally different than a business that is temporarily or permanently closed, that, that, they should never interfere. Like, they're not, they're totally different classifications.
Right, I, I'm just saying, if, if, if Amit checks the business in Google, Red Rabbit.
Yeah.
Be permanently closed, correct?
Yeah, are you saying, okay, I was worried that a business that's in operation is sometimes showing permanent close. Are you saying it's the other way around, like a permanently closed ones is sometimes showing it's in operation?
Completely decoupled from permanently closed. That's not, yeah, hold on, this is not related to it, let's just assume that the business is in operation. Okay, the hour, so John, the hours for this place are saying eleven thirty AM to two AM. Which means that it technically closes at two AM on, on Tuesday morning, or the next morning. I think when we're checking if the place is open or not, that it's short circuiting because we're not considering that. If it goes into the, if it closes in the AM, we actually have to skip a day.
Uh, I see.
To get the time window right. It's just saying, so it says like eleven thirty Monday to two AM Monday, it's not rolling over the close time to the next day.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um.
That's just an easy check to see if the close time is before the open time, then roll it over a day.
Okay. Uh, Amit, are you gonna be able to?
Yeah, I'm just calling the.
Okay, interesting. Okay, where did we leave off, where, um?
Like, we're talking, we're talking about test flight notifications.
Yeah, I got that, okay, wanna test build forty-one, I need to put that on my test phone. Um, I gotta get going for a meeting here in a minute, um. Yeah, let's, um, Wells, why don't you go ahead and give us your update, and then, uh, I gotta break off. Wells, are you there? He said he'll be back, that was a couple minutes ago, okay, well. Oh, yeah, Jerry, you said, um. Oh, I think you've already addressed this with core innovations, there was the misspelling in the query.
Yep.
Anything new to report as far as like, uh, is our data telling us anything new, we made those minor changes to the way locations are?
Hmm, let's see.
Yeah, hopefully more accurate, I know, I haven't gotten any, but then again, I haven't really been going anywhere new. I'm either home or at the office.
Thing happened in the past two days, uh, we got a few, few that went on the past couple days.
Okay, anybody, um, interact with them?
Yeah. Let's see. Favorites, there's a favorite that Tori got notified for. And she added that to her favorites, let me check, check ins.
Cool.
And check in, let's see, there's one to check.
Uh, so, hello?
Yes.
So Jerry, what with the business which you sent me, our API is returning as a permanently closed?
Can, can we, can we just throw out the permanently closed for a second and consider the place of that hours? Right now, because if it were permanently closed, then you would update the, the times to say permanently closed, right?
So we are doing that, so, okay, I will show you.
Right, but, okay, okay, I'm not, I'm not worried about permanently closed. Take a place that is in operation.
If you send me the Red Rabbit kitchen and bar.
Yes, let's just take, take another place, let's take some results. We take a place, anyone that's open in operation, that, like, find a barroom or something. And like, I wonder. So if I take, if I search for a place, if I search for Bar West, I don't know what their hours are, but I'm assuming. Okay, Bar West. Uh, no, Bar West, um, you might wanna try this in QA. Yeah. Yeah, Bar West closes at midnight. Find a business, I'm in, and I'll take the hours to where it opens, actually, another place might be like Raising Cane's. I'm trying to find a place for you. Um. Actually, this is perfect because it says they're closed right now. Um, share, I'm sending it to you in QA. But Raising Cane's, they're open right now and they're saying closed. Because they open, they're open until midnight.
Uh, send the, send me the name of the place.
Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers, I said, I shared you the profile in circles on QA.
I'm not in QA, I'm for differently.
Oh.
He's gonna need the exact, cause there's like so many, there's a chain, it's a chain restaurant, right?
Most of them are usually open.
So, I see what you're saying, but, yeah, better just send him the one.
Yeah. I'm gonna. I'm switching to prod. So this is a place that is down the road for me, Amit, it, it's down the road and. They should be open right now, and they're definitely in operation. Did you get it?
The hours operation thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Well.
If you want, I'll go pick up some chicken for lunch.
Monday, nine AM to twelve.
Correct, so they close at midnight, tonight. All day.
Wednesday, nine AM to twelve midnight, all day. And the location, what is current time there?
So right now, for me, it is twelve thirty-six. PM.
They're later long, uh, wait, what is it, we are getting after long, so, chicken.
There should be a location, I see, I see the, I see the map marker.
Wonder if it's so, uh, program, what are you doing, so I'll tell you, let me check, using last long, uh, we are getting the time zone, okay?
Okay, yeah, let me know what the time is, it should be central time, but you normally call it like Chicago time.
Wells, are you back? Okay, well, um. I'm gonna leave you guys here. And, um. I guess if Wells needs anything, he can reach out, but, uh, I got a meeting coming up in an hour, I still have to, have to take a shower, get ready for that. Drive over there, so I gotta get going, but, um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna install that QA build on my phones and, um, Chantel. Todd, let me know if you have any issues on Android. Chantel, I do wanna catch up with you two on, maybe later on this afternoon with. Some of the plans, we were talking about the strategy, oh, yeah, one question, did, did DNA get back to you or Danny on? What's up with the, the?
Yeah, I, I talked to them yesterday, I just wanna call with them for a while. Um, and, yeah, they said that it should, we should see the ads with those today, would be the latest that we'd see.
They see the ads, like, see a draft, or they would be like, cause, a draft?
Draft.
Okay.
We can see what they look like, yeah, um, I had Asia apologize profusely for their. For dropping the ball on that consistently, so.
Okay, okay, will you have my permission to ride them more on stuff like this, cause we're paying them.
Yeah.
We're paying them a lot.
Yeah.
And, you know, we had my friend go through all the videos and, you know, spend his time.
We don't wanna have him have wasted his time, you know?
Right, yep, okay, well, yeah, let's take a look at those and then let's discuss. Some of the other aspects of the campaign, I'm gonna close it out with different, all those different strategies we've been talking about.
Jerry, it is returning time zone at, uh, Chicago.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right, and, uh, this hour for when it's the nine AM to twelve AM, current time.
That's alright, but it's showing closed in the app.
It's true, there, there is a problem with our calculation, let's check.
The reason is, I mean, because it closes at twelve AM midnight. Because it closes at twelve AM. It is, like, it's rolling over. So, it, well, it, it, we are not rolling over the date. But we have to, you know, manually roll over the date at midnight.
Okay, so, I will work on it, let's check out what is the problem, I'll fix it.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, well then, um, I'm going to, uh, drop off and stay inside. Uh, if I have any questions, I'll just let you guys know, and if you need anything from me, let me know.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, thanks, guys.